...vocation led by Pastor Josh Sparkman, Christ Presbyterian Church, and remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's right. Lord God, we come to you this morning, to you who are Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. You've created all things, you've created the universe that we live in. You've created all of us, image bearers unto you, and therefore we have dignity because we are all reflections of you. You've created government as a reflection of how you order and govern all things in this world and in this universe. And so, Lord, we ask that this morning we would look unto you for light, for help, for wisdom that we don't have in ourselves. We call upon you, the living and true God, to work in us and through us to pursue righteousness, to pursue justice, to do that which is good for the constituents of Mobile. Lord, we live in a strange time. We live in a time where we're very alone, where there are rules in place that are both for our protection but are also frustrating. And, Lord, we ask that you give us patience. We ask that you would give us some wisdom as to how to move in and out of these things. Lord, we pray for each one here, and we ask that you keep us all safe and healthy. Lord, we lift up to you our children and our grandchildren and keep them safe and healthy as well. Send down your grace, that today all things might be done well and for your glory. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in the gospel, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Roll pause, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'd ask first that you would turn off or silence all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. In addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state for the record both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on an non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you would like to speak by 2:00 p.m. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given that proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on an agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. Speakers are granted five minutes. At the end of four minutes, there will be a bell that will sound, and that indicates that you have one minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell means that all of your time has elapsed. In addressing the council, there should be no personal address to any individual council members. All of your statements ought to be made to myself, the service's chair, and if any council member wishes to be recognized, we are responding. There is opportunity. To maintain the course, there will be no undue applause and all public outcry allowed. These are our rules, and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government. That's it.
Approval of Minutes of May 19th. So moved.
Second.
The party moved in second in a discussion. If not, all in favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good mornings. Good to be back, meeting together again. Appreciate everybody wearing their mask. I have mine, but I chose to take it off so that you can better hear me. Yesterday being Memorial Day, I had the opportunity to go to Magnolia Cemetery, and within Magnolia Cemetery is located the National Cemetery, Mobile National Cemetery. It's mighty sobering and humbling to be standing there with all of those white gravestones of our, those who served in the armed forces and paid the ultimate sacrifice. But it was interesting that as we were there, there are like 150 flags that have been flying over the last several decades that put up each Memorial Day weekend. And we reached up and grabbed the name tag on one of them just to see whose flag it was, and it happened to be a real close personal friend of my father's, which kind of was very shocking to me that the only one we really looked at was somebody that we knew. But there are people out there that we all know. We're tremendously grateful for those who are currently serving. We hope that we don't honor them in the future. We hope that their services, that they are able to do that and live long and productive lives as citizens after they retire. Anyway, appreciative of all those that try to make Memorial Day special for our community. Now, today is another special day in that we will be honoring four individuals today that responded on the spur of a moment when they saw a fellow human being in trouble, and they maybe without thinking but just reacting, they did something that will be recognized today, and that is they saved lives. And so, to each one of them, you will be recognized by Chief Sealy, but I can tell you that all Mobileians are tremendously grateful for what you've done, and not just the people and the families of those whose lives you saved. And we never know that when we will be in a situation where we'll be called upon to do something, and my hope is, is that we will act with the same heroism that was exhibited by those four gentlemen. So, thank you very much for what you did. Now, this past weekend, if you observed, the media, it was the first time that we as a society really have gotten back out into a routine other than being either stay-at-home or safer-at-home. And it appears that not many people are really wanting to wear masks, but please don't be confused that the virus is still out there. And actually, the more people that have the virus, the more people are going to get the virus unless you do something to protect yourself. So, anyway, we will continue to do things that we've done as an administration, and that is working with the county, working with the Mobile County Health Department to do those things that we can do to help protect you. So, I'm looking forward to a great week. The couple of interesting things to me that we have on the agenda today is the council will be voting on an Alabama Power Company contract for us to have convert all of our streetlights, these are traffic lights, these are the streetlights, that'll all be converted to LED lights, which will give us greater illumination, but it's, I think, is it, Jim?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand lights over a period of a couple of years will be changed out from whatever they may be today, from a mercury vapor to whatever it is, but it will be LED going forward. So, we're tremendously grateful for Alabama Power Company for doing that. And they'll also be voting on receiving the money from the Restore Act for the St. Louis Street rebuild, which was a 5.8, almost 5.9 million dollar grant. So, once that money is received, we will kick things in a different, higher gear, start implementing the process of rebuilding St. Louis Street. Those are just two of many good things that we're working on. So, again, appreciate everybody being here and looking forward to a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
On the afternoon of Wednesday, May 20, 2020, Mobile Fire Rescue Department Communications Division received multiple emergency 911 calls reporting that a park unit was on fire at Serenity Department 557th Avenue. While Public Safety Dispatch, a field in college gathering information and dispatching first responders to the park complex, smoke continued to build in and around building K, which is half of which houses 16 residential park units. Although most of the parks were occupied at the time, most of, many of the residents in the building were unaware of that the fire had been happening. Prior to emergency response, arrived on scene, fire continued spread, growing so large that smoke could be seen for miles. As thick black smoke rose toward the sky, several civilian men jumped to action, rushing from door to door, window to window, notifying tenants and neighbors of the local municipality. Ronald Goblin, Demarcus Battle, Quinn Parish, Harold Sykes, sprinted through the two-story building, learning occupants and helping to rescue the rest of the safety away from the burning structure. With bricks and fire extinguishers in tow, Goblin, Battle, Parish, and Sykes even broke a few windows to gain access to occupants. As MFRD Fire Department arrived on scene, the structure presented with almost half the building in gullible flames, earning a three alarm response to adequately extinguish the massive blaze. Without any training, protective gear, or duty to act, these good-natured, brave-hearted civilians threw themselves into harm's way to ensure the safety of more than twenty neighbors, including small children residing in the burning building. The Serenity Department incident remains a heartbreaking tragedy and traumatizing experience for those involved, displacing 16 families and nearly costing many of their lives. The fire ultimately destroyed eight units and damaged four of them. However, thanks to the aid of these heroic citizens, miraculously, it has salvaged the park. On behalf of the City of Mobile and Mobile Fire Rescue Department, I would like to present Life Saving Awards to Ronald Goblin, Demarcus Battle, Quinn Parish, Harold Sykes, for their selfless acts and for the greater responsibility for saving lives.
I think if I were coming out this way so that the people can video.
Just gotta get one of that.
Place that. Am I right there? That'd be good. And place the audience, huh?
Do they want to join the department?
Thank you all.
Jennifer, if you want to come forward.
I just wanted to say, my name is Jennifer Wright, and my aunt Anita Andrews was your second floor rescue, the bathtub rescue, and her five grandchildren. And not just to these heroic gentlemen, but to the fire department, to the officers, and to the council for recognizing them and for the service that you do all the time. My family is truly, truly grateful, and my understanding is that my aunt had been giving up the dead because no one knew she was up there, but the grandkids did, and you all went back. Amen. And I am so grateful for that. And I wanted to make a presentation to you, and I want to challenge those of you who may be listening, this is a never-go-broke wallet, and it is designed to have more than every corner, every bill in it. And if you, as you're increase, because you're going to be increased, if you will be faithful to put into that wallet everything that you take out of it to borrow it from, you will never go broke. And I watched on the news that one family who was rescued said, "Everybody's paying attention to you, but not a lot, enough attention is going to those victims." So, I want to challenge those of you who may hear of this, to make a never-go-broke wallet. It's simple, only $189.91, from one penny to 100, can fill a wallet. And so, I'm sad to say that it's short of $20, but before you leave here, I'll make sure you get that $20 for whoever that one person is short. Every other one is in there, but I didn't have time to go out and do it, so I borrowed from my mom, my daughter, and myself, and I know it's going to be replaced in their wallets, so I wanted to contribute to this. The vision was bigger, I wanted to be in a wallet, but I saw these bags, and I asked a little girl, I said, "Can you make a sign to put in each of those bags and each of those wallets?" Because I'm making one for my family as well, the five children and the mom and the other daughter. And it says, "Mal, Jesus loves you." And I didn't get the little card from the little girl who asked to make this, but these are from Hearts Who Care, the family and friends of Anita Andrews and her five grandkids, and a community that will continue to give to you.
Just want to say.
Picture, Master.
Want to say? It's a blessing, God. You know, you don't know what you're going to do when you're in a, you know, a situation, man, you know. I seen a rainbow in the machine, you know, and I thanks God, and I'm thankful for the help, I'm thankful we was able to help her, you know. It's always good all the time, and all the time God is good.
That's right.
That's what's going on.
I want to say thank you to Ms. Anita and her family, and also the firefighters that did arrive. Like, at that point in time, it wasn't nothing but action, you know, it wasn't my thinking, it was our best to make sure everybody get up out of here. And I like, appreciate DJ, you know, Quinn coming off to the rescue, you know, everybody played a good team tonight. That's all, so I want to thank God.
I want to thank God first, my family, and I want to thank City of Mobile. And I got a couple of people that I want to thank, neighbors that also helped with this process that we did with. So, I want to thank 20 of them, and everybody who helped out there. I forgot my name, thank God.
Thank you, thank you.
Monthly finance report.
You get to go from all that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, April is the month of reports of March's sales tax revenue and other consumer base revenues, so it's the first year since we have looked at hard data that is in the same timeframe as the COVID-19 crisis. The state orders were entered March 13, 19, and then 20, 29. So, over the course of the last half or so of March, you know, we had various businesses that got shut down. Even before then, we had a lot of consumers who were concerned about going out in public, so we actually had some declines, especially at restaurants that occurred before state order came into effect. We had earlier anticipated that March's revenues were going to be down by about 2.6 million, they're actually down by 3.1. That's the total, so that's a combination of sales tax losses and other revenues that normally includes us, actually during it. The largest of those are the fees from the Carnival cruise ship and the revenues from the convention center and the civic center and the sanctuary. We had recently anticipated, as you recall from about two months ago, that April and May would be the bad two months, and that we might be down by as much as 7.2 million. Countering the, maybe a little bit worse news than I expected for March taxes, April reports, it looks like April is not going to be quite that bad, although it will expand the loss, we think, from March. We'll know a little bit better later this week as we've been able to go through the many sales tax returns, which are, of course, April sales. So, on balance, it's, you know, maybe a little bit better than what we had anticipated, and we hope that that continues. If we don't have a second or a third wave this year, we project a total loss for the fiscal year owing to COVID of about 22 million, and for the calendar year, about 31. That's looking like it may be a little bit pessimistic based on what we've seen so far in April, but that's about the extent of the way we can project with limited hard data that we have right now. As to what suffered and what didn't suffer, as you can imagine, grocery stores' sales were way up because restaurant sales were, of course, way down. Big Box discount stores were up. I think that's because of the fact that they sell lots of groceries. We think that's right, we don't really have that precise data. And as you probably have all heard, Big Box home improvement stores were out the roof as people found things that they could do.
No one intended there.
That's right. So, people found things to keep them busy. Hotels were, of course, way down. In the center city, in the downtown, occupancies of hotels have been about 8%, interestingly on the Beltline, they were about 30%. And Telus Parter were actually only down to 43%. So, it looks like business travel that relied upon the office complexes downtown, the government buildings downtown were hit hard, and we think, talking to the hoteliers, that those occupancies are going to come up during April and May as those are going to come to us. So, not really good data to this point, but as much as we can anticipate. Kind of be happy to answer it.
Any questions, Mr. West?
And I don't know if you know this or can answer this.
Do you have any correspondence with the cruise industry at all, with Carnival? Are they giving any indication?
You know, they have, I think they still have in place an August date for beginning business, but as you can imagine, all their ships are now out of business. So, if you think about it that way, it's like starting a brand new business from the ground up. So, we don't really know what their thought process is as to how to build that business. We hope it includes us, but we understand it.
And they were docked here for a while, but then they pulled out. Were they paying any kind of warfish fee while their ship was here, or was that just courtesy? Do you know?
I do not think they were, you know, while they were here, it was still in the very early times, very stages.
But they left, obviously, so they're not in port anywhere in America, I don't think.
No, I think they're.
Panama? Yeah, where they're flagged. So, the loss, when you say either that 22 million to 31 million, that includes that revenue that would go towards paying the note, correct, and the parking garage when that sits vacant? Because how much is that a month that we?
Well, the total, you know, there are two revenues, strangely, from Carnival. One is a per-passenger charge for actually embarking and disembarking, and then the other is for the actual parking fees that come in. And the total of those combined is about $500,000 a month. So, that'll be ongoing for a while.
Right, right. And the state got a pass-through of money for pandemic issues that every municipality suffered, so have we already put our request in, and do you know how that's moving?
Well, the latest we know, the mayors of the larger cities have been talking to the governor's office and making sure that the cities are able to access those funds.
Didn't she put that in her amendment, that she was concerned they were not doing that?
That's right. So, the latest we have from the governor's office is that there will be access or direct reimbursement available to cities. As you know, from previous discussions, to date, we've, you know, we've spent in excess of $500,000 on things from PPE acquisition, test kits, to setting up the temporary medical facilities that did the testing, and then the cities at night, Mobile effort, will, we think it's going to be a little bit less than $500,000, but it's going to get close. So, right now, we believe we'll have about a million dollars worth of expenditures that will be appropriate for reimbursement. We're trusting that we will get that, and that does not go into the computation, by the way that I gave you.
Okay, oh, okay.
So, that would be, you know, we deem those reimbursable, so.
Okay, and employees that came in when everyone was sheltered at home, there was talk about giving hazard pay, so is there a way to do that and back it into their revenues if the state's going to give funding for, you know, municipal activities? Is there a way to calculate that to give them that time and a half? Would it qualify, do you think?
I don't know. That's something that you'll probably have to wait and see what happens, but I don't have the answer as of now.
Well, let me ask, and I'm asking, and I'm hopeful that you'll be able to expound to some degree on it. The resources that the state received from the federal government as relates to the COVID-19 pandemic was intended for what purpose?
The CARES Act, 1.8 or 1.9 billion, I think is what you're referring to. That was intended to reimburse states for expenses of fighting COVID-19. So, it was not available, for example, for revenue replacement.
Yes, okay.
It would be available for the things we mentioned earlier, such as direct medical expenditures, protective equipment expenditures, and the like. We don't believe that all the cities and all the counties and the state would be able to come up with anything approaching that amount of federal money, in which case it all has to be returned, the excess has to be returned to the federal government.
Well, I want to join, and I know we remarked on this in previous meetings, but I want to echo sentiments of Councilwoman Rich. I appreciate you all finding out for certain, if some semblance of hazard pay bonus for those who've been on the front lines would be a reimbursable expense, so that those resources won't just be returned to Washington if we have a chance to address financially those who've helped this city get over the front ends of this pandemic. Is that something that you all could make an inquiry and let us know if that's an applicable expense for those resources?
Mr. President, we will definitely be investigating that and looking for guidance from the state's government office to that condition. As you know, the CARES Act was rushed in a matter of days, which we're very appreciative of. But as you can imagine, there was a lot of ambiguity in the legislation, but our eyes and ears will be open for that answer.
Well, I think probably every member of this council would be appreciative and in support of an action of that nature, and I hope that if they found a wiggle room to plug 200 million in to build a new state house, that the funds ought to be available to help our first responders.
Yes, sir. I think they've come to the realization that that would not be. question.
That's next.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's been tossed down for 20 years.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
The property moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted.
COVID-19 items held over. There are no objections. I'll take all of these together. 21354 authorized contract with Alabama Power Company to upgrade streetlights to LED lighting. 21355 authorized contract with C. Thornton for engineering services, miscellaneous drainage repairs, Group D. 21356 authorized three-year service contract with Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP for fire extinguishers, inspection servicing, and maintenance at Verish City of Mobile facility. 31357 authorized grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. 31358 authorized grant application to the State of Alabama Restore Act for implementation of the innovating St. Louis Street Mobile's technology corridor.
So moved.
Second.
Should probably have moved in second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Vice President, then we'll go to Ms. Gray.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Delap about the Alabama Power. What's the timeframe, and how long would it actually be? I mean, is it years, months, you know, and in a particular areas, you know, what the Alabama Power likes with the LED light?
Right. This initiative from Alabama Power is about a 12 to 18-month project. They are recently finishing work in Montgomery, and they'll be starting the transition in Mobile. They used to contract to do the work, and they've already laid out zones of the city. What they laid out is their priority. We could adjust that, but generally speaking, they kind of have a pattern in which they're working. In total, it would be about 20,000 lights. Each zone has roughly 1,000 lights in it, maybe a little bit more, because I think there's 17 zones. But it'll cover the entire city area, entire city footprint, which Alabama Power operates, owns and operates lights for the city currently. They'll effectively take off the head, which is a high-pressure sodium or other type of light fixture that we currently pay to have them clean and maintain, and the lights go out routinely. They'll take off that entire head, replace it with a LED fixture with a sensor. We'll also have ensured that any tree branches and things that make any blocking lights will be trimmed up, and any conflict between those lights or lights which may be in the same area, we'll look to optimize that so we don't have to bring the lights in the same area. So, it's going to be a great transformative project for the city. Additionally, the city's in the process of trying to do the transition of our own lights that we own and operate to LED. And so, we're pretty much now trying to buy just LED going forward and do those replacements on one form. So, as lights go out, we'll replace them with LED. And we'll do other lights as well. We do construction use LED, unless it's a historic zone, and some places it's gas lights and other things, but that's very, very few.
Yeah, my sister lives in Birmingham, and when they came to replace the lights with LED, she was happier than happier because she said it made a big difference. Just have one request. As when they come down to Mobile, Baltimore Street, we definitely need the LED lights.
Yeah, they're going to do every, like I said, 20,000 lights that they own. It's hard to tell sometimes for the landowner whether it's an Alabama Power light or a city-owned light, but we will also work to replace all of ours as well. So, whatever they don't get, we will also catch over the next couple of years.
Alabama Power lights hang over the street, I think, and have a number on it?
If it's wood, it's Alabama Power. If it's metal?
That's right. So, if it's a metal pole, it's a city light. If it's a wooden pole that has a fixture on it, it's a Alabama Power light. That's the easiest way to identify the difference between an Alabama Power light and a city Mobile light. But again, we will also look to ours. Kind of three bundles: their lights, our lights, and then the highway lights on I-10.
That's us.
And those are ours. And we do that, we, you know, build by Alabama. We do it, and then we'll transition those. So, that's kind of the three things we'll look at in transitioning those lights. The highway lights will probably be the last, just because they're the hardest and most expensive to transition.
Thank you.
Look, Mr. President, Ms. Gray. Ms. Richson?
Ms. Gray.
Also, Ms. Gray, or Ms. Richson?
Well, mine's not on that, so if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a copy of that schedule? How are they going to approach this?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have the map that shows the zones. We don't have the exact start date. I think it's going to be in minutes. We'll have to confirm with Alabama Power. Once we get the contract signed by Mayor and Alabama Power, then they'll start to schedule it. Once I get a schedule from them, I'll pass that around with the map, and you'll know how windows will be in your neighborhood over the next 12, 18 months.
I have a question about, also about this. In neighborhoods, when it's not a, the developer put in a metal-type pole, is it still Alabama Power? I think I often find that out to be the case. They're not wooden poles in newer neighborhoods, you know, like 20 years.
Some of them are transitioned to the city. There are some varies in there. So, on some of those cases, we just need to look and see who's the owner of it. There are some unique instances out there, and we're going to look to kind of clean up a lot of that, too, from just a bookkeeping standpoint. Also, make sure it needs to be correctly built to the right code. They have different rates for the type of light, whether it's a streetlight or a light in a park or somewhere else. And over time, those have gotten a little out of whack, so we're going to get all that corrected as well, which ultimately saves the city a lot of money, helps offset any costs for the transition.
Yeah. I'm sure we all get calls about neighborhoods not being lit enough, and a lot of it has to do with the type of light fixture that's in there.
Right. And at the end of this project, you know, it's going to be brighter, more reliable, longer-lasting, less dangerous, and safer. These will be, the areas will be built a lot better than they are today, so it creates an increased safety and better visibility. We get a lot of complaints from the public about poor visibility on driving and elderly people, so that's going to be great in that respect as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Gray?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on 21355, which is the drainage repairs going on in my district as well as Mr. Williams'. Mine is in Princeton Woods, and I've been hearing about the need for some drainage repairs in Princeton Woods quite a while ever since I've been on this council. So, I'm just happy to see we're finally able to do this. It is a huge project, very, very expensive, which is one of the reasons that it's taken this long. So, again, I'm just really happy to see us moving forward with this. It'll make a big difference to all those folks in Princeton Woods, and hopefully Nick and I will stop getting some of those phone calls from some of the same people over here. So, I just appreciate everybody's efforts to make this happen.
Can I find out how this is coming?
CIP.
It's CIP?
It is a big time CIP.
If it starts with a C, it's CIP. Okay. We've had the motion second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All in spades.
Appeals. We have requests for a waiting notice ordinance on June 6 on Clemente Court, June 19 and 20 on LeShure Road, June 6, 13, 20, and 27 at Joe Bailey Park.
What about the Joe Bailey Park?
Yeah, that's District 5 and 3. I'm going to say, because Joe's not here, that's a way to, you know, way to rejoin that.
Oh, on both of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Different.
Okay, so then it's June 6 on Clemente Court, June 19 and 20 on LeShure Road.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
June 6, 13, 20, and 27 at Joe Bailey Park and on the corner of Halls Mill Road and McBay Drive.
Move to layover one week.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Adam, it's Layal.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Reggie Hill.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stevenson, citizen stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007, Central Street. I'm here today to remind of you things, as well as to get some clarity on some others, and I hope that we can have something addressed by the administration or the council. When the last time I was able to speak before this, I reminded everyone that I didn't got that level this thing. Didn't matter what your class was, which basically was any of those things, it was leveling for each of us. And today, we are reminded of this idea of faith over science. So, it's not as dangerous as many would believe because of what has been presented to this mainstream. Today, we got a prime example of the faith over science. And I hope that we can remember to reflect that as we embrace those citizens who are willing to go above and beyond to make this place a better place for all of us people. I have a few questions. I hope, again, that they'll be entertained, and I will still submit them in writing, so it'll be on official portion of the record. Has the city council obtained or voted on any resolution or ordinance pertaining to five key towers in the city of Mobile? If so, what would be the location and the length of time that these events would arise?
Mr. Hill, if you could submit your questions in writing.
I haven't been there for seven weeks, but I'm responsible. At least want to be able to see if somebody will, you know, respond to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My next question. Were there any business owners who applied for the Ignite Mobile grant that received multiple awards? And if so, what is the percentage of multiple awards compared to the single applicant award, applicant awards? Because we remember that there was presented from the administration that if entities had multiple business licenses within the city that could apply more than one time. So, I just want to know if there's any data on the percentage of those companies or individuals who have received multiple awards?
I don't have that data at hand, but the data is available. You could reach out to, or we could get Ricardo Woods to get up with the Nature Henderson and whatever's the public information. We'd be glad to share it with you.
Okay. Well, the city, thank you, Mr. Man. Excuse me. Will the city's awards still be released for this year? And these are those resources that were allocated from the Neighborhood Development Department?
Still have a plan. CDBG. There's still an action plan, and yes, there's going to be some award, yes.
Okay. Now, is there any record of any of those resources were utilized for the Ignite Mobile project or that from different?
CDBG is separate.
Yes.
No, CDBG funds.
Nonprofits got a CBD. Didn't they get some kind of, the nonprofits was a pass-through? Yeah, CDBG was a separate award for the.
Nonprofits, yeah.
Yeah, but the Ignite Mobile.
Yeah, that was city funding.
And so, those funds that were allocated to the Neighborhood Development Department, they still will be allocated as scheduled to the existing nonprofit. Okay, thank you. As the city council received any documentation on how the gas tax resources were utilized, and so, can that be found by the public?
Nikki passed out something, didn't you? Gas tax. There was some distributed gifts.
You can get access to that, Ms. Hill.
Okay, thank you so much. And as we see a spike of reporting regarding the bond activity in the city, I want to publicly request that we, the Director of Public Safety and the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, as we've been eradicating some of these problems, I'm not going to ask the questions pertaining to it because of the time that's been there. We know that the Executive Director of Mobile Housing Authority has responded in a letter to the Office of the City Council. Has there been any status updates on political conditions on that eviction of this with public housing units?
Well, we did receive a response from Mr. Pierce relative to the evictions, and also some additional communication from her as it relates to evictions. To my knowledge, there are no planned evictions moving forward. That could change moving down. But we have expressed our opinion, I think, pretty clearly as it relates to their plan for evictions.
And I will very briefly. I appreciate the sentiments from the council on the rest. I basically asked my question about what we're going to do with the money that we're going to allocate. I will submit something to the director.
I think this is time, Mr. Hill.
I'm right at the end.
Mr. President, if we could allow it, and allow it on my request, to go ahead and finish up, because there's been some questions in between, and it's been a while since we've heard. So, let me.
Well, I don't mind. Go ahead, Ms. Hill.
Ask if you give you another minute or two.
And I only have these three remaining, and they're very quick. Because once, there's really two, because she already expressed the answer for that. We saw the National Guard was activated to assist the local national. Was there any other communication that has been made between the city in regards to them helping to grid the COVID-19 or any other public safety that have been down in place dealing with National Guard?
Mr. Mayor?
So, the munifactor man, which is the Mobile Housing Authority, the city county, excuse me, the administration and the county. Now, there has been conversations, but all the conversation is directed through the Mobile Health Department. So, if you have a question about any contact that they've had, you can reach out to the Health Department. And regarding any follow-up regarding the central tower situation, you can reach out to Michael Pierce, who heads the Housing Authority, to get that information.
Thank you, Mr. Man. And my final sentiment, today on the agenda for the essential COVID-19 items, this was the best by far, in my opinion. But the city is moving forward to do things to make this policy way better here in Mobile. I do hope that the Director of Public Safety was just my question that I submitted regarding 31357. Other than that, this is the best that we've seen so far on the central elements. I think that's going to help our city move forward. I want to publicly thank the Chairman of the Rules Committee for respect for the chain, and the Assembly and our assistance to participate in this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Reggie.
All right, now. No, Mr. Chairman of the Rules Committee. All right, Maps and Clerk?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03360 through 6363.
Motion to suspend the rule for immediate consideration for consent resolution 03-360, 0360-3633.
Second. Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
03360, we appoint Barbara Horace to the Medical Clinic Board of the City of Mobile, Spring Hill, 60361, approval award, a special bonus to firefighters of the month, April and May. 60362 and 363 are determined appropriations to the Southern Skyline Community and the Sugar Creek Home Owners Association, serve a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 08364 through 21386.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for CIP resolution 08-364 through 21-386.
Second. Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
08364, approved purchase order to Target USA LLC for flooring and for Moore's Spring Hill Library. 21386 authorized contract with Moore and Architecture for Lincoln Park Pavilion Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gray?
On both of these, Spring Hill Library flooring, we have been really piecemealing the improvements there. As money becomes available, we're not able to do it all at once. So, this is the latest round in trying to replace the floor. When they came in and replaced the desk, they found that the desk wasn't exactly the same size as it used to be, therefore, the extremely old carpet was much more visible and looked a whole lot worse than it used to, because, you know, once you improve something, everything else looks, you know, very old and worn out, which it was. So, we have been able to kind of patchwork some flooring in Spring Hill Library until we can get the whole thing redone. So, again, this is just piecemeal, trying to get this library up in this century, because it is an old library that's had very few updates in the past years. A little bit every year, we try to do to make it better. So, this is what the flooring is about there. The 21386 Pavilion. The 21386 pavilion improvements, we have a new plan to make improvements at Langen Park. The pavilion improvements were part of my CIP expenditures for this year, and I'm really happy to see us moving forward with these, because people had long talked about, why can't you do anything at Langen Park? Why is Langen Park, you know, look this way? Why can't you make improvements, et cetera, et cetera, as we all hear on all of our parks? And the reason is because it's so expensive to make these improvements. So what I have advocated for is let's do a little bit at a time, let's get that low-hanging fruit, so the people really see that we are making some headway. And we'll do a phased-in approach on these pavilions. We've also just done the restrooms. We have a lot of other things in store for Langen Park that I think everybody will be really excited about. So again, this is the beginning of this new plan for Langen and doing these pavilions, and I really look forward to seeing the improvements. We're not tearing them down and putting up something that looks all modular. They will be renovated and look more in keeping with what Langen Park is about, you know, very historic park, very natural looking, and that's what I thought would be best suited for the park. And I want to thank Shonda Smith and all of her staff in Parks and Rec for moving this forward, that was such a great job.
Any further discussion? Is not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01365 through 60389.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for resolution 01-366, and the rest will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Sir.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Well, I need to hold just one second. I still have not seen that resolution.
It's there.
He sent it to...
They emailed it? Okay, unless I get an alert, I don't read my emails.
There isn't.
I do, I do other things. All right. Wasn't he sent?
Yeah, it was sent.
Okay. All right, we're good. Thank you. Sorry about that. Where is that?
Yeah, motion is set.
There is motion second.
Motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Breger?
This is like the District Seven Day. Doesn't happen often. This is the last little bit of the puzzle piece to allow us and Alda to move forward with letting the construction bids. This is a redo, if you will, on the agreement. The Railroad and Alda are very, very particular on everything that they do with these grants, with funding for these roadway improvements. So I'm just really happy to see it happen. Between Flo and Nick, I mean, y'all have done just a great job of seeing this through and continuing to work on it. It's been very frustrating for everybody involved, but finally, we're at the end where we can actually start seeing construction. We've already got utility work going on, so people see us moving ahead. One portion of the, the western portion of Ziegler, a lot of work has been going on. You can see where the lanes are going, so that's well underway. But this other portion, the Forest Tilt 80, is what we're working on now. So with this, we should see some more of that construction work getting started, what, sometime this summer, maybe next, something like that. So, so this is great news for everybody in the area.
Any further discussion? Is not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01366, authorized agreement with Illinois Central Railroad, Local Railroad Agency for roadway improvements, highway grade crossing signals. Ziegler Boulevard was placing and superseding any and all prior agency roadway improvement agreements. Sir.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Richardson?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, Mr. President, I sent a, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet.